We'll move to 7.4. Consider adopting ordinance number 25-54 approving the fiscal year 25-26 annual operating budget beginning on October 1, 2025 and ending on September 30, 2026. Consider ratifying the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2025-2026 annual operating budget. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. As we remember from last week, we had our public hearing for this budget at that time. Staff presented a budget with not knowing whether the county was going to participate in the regional radio network. And they have since voted to sign an interlocal agreement, but have not delivered it upon two requests that we've asked for it to be delivered. We have not received it. So tonight, we stand before you without a signed interlocal agreement. We feel like we provided an interlocal agreement in accordance with what they wanted, but we've had absolutely no feedback since Thursday. And so we reached out to them twice, asking for the resolution or the interlocal agreement. So with that, we were in the predicament that we needed to present a budget to you with a .42 tax rate to fund the budget. And we've covered that adequately in the past. And tonight, that's a little bit of confusion on what to do next. I think the city council needs to determine what they want to do moving forward. I would say that in the background of all this activity, we've been monitoring the special sessions related to taxation. The legislature, the Senate adopted Senate Bill 10, co-sponsored by our very own Senator Birdwell. And they adopted a tax rate limit that would cap an increase of 2.5% for any expenditures above current tax rates. If you exceed that 2.5%, you would need to go for an election. As recent as 2019, that multiplier was 8%. And it's been steadily going down ever since. The current law as presented, I don't know if it, I was told it passed today with a 2.5% increase. At one point, the legislature was looking at a 1% increase that would trigger an election. And they were putting 2/3 requirement to be approved. So basically, you would never get another cent in property tax other than the no new revenue rate under that bill. So they came back together as a conference committee and came up with a 2.5%. And I believe it's on the governor's desk waiting to be signed. So in the future, that only applies to cities or counties with population of 75,000. I would expect that the next legislative session, they come back and remove that 75,000, just like they did on the annexation ordinances where they said if you're under a certain limit, it doesn't apply to you. And then the next session, they came back and made it apply to everybody. So that's the path that we're on. I believe Mr. Sorrell has seen some things from other city attorneys. I'm not sure if he's willing to share that. But I can just say that it's not been a positive environment for the sustainability of cities moving forward. And I think y'all need to make a decision of how much tax you want to assess and whether you want to anticipate the county's participation or not. I've done all I can do on that topic. Happy to answer any questions. If you have particular questions about the budget, about funding, anything we can do, staff and I are ready to respond for your questions should you have any related to this budget approval.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Overdue.
So it's my understanding then that this $200,000 that we thought the county was going to give us for the Grandbury Regional Radio Network, since we don't have that money, we have to include it in our budget as what we're going to pay for. And in order to pay that, we have to have a .042 tax rate, correct? In order to have a balanced budget.
Yes, and it was more like 300,000 instead of 200,000. And Ava, do you want to add anything to that conversation? No, that's fine. You don't have to. I'm just-
I can add 300,000 related to about 1.3 cents.
Okay.
And I can also add looking at-
You'll turn the microphone on.
I'll just repeat what I said. I said that 300,000 translates to about 1.3 cents. And we looked at the median home values that was also posted by the Central Appraisal District. So on a $400,000 home, 1 cent would be about $40 annually difference for them to look at from that side as well.
Other comments? Mr. Wildling?
So if we were considering 39.5 cents and the proposed rate's 42, but it would add 1.3 cents, that's 40.8. So where's the other 1 point or the 1.2 come from? You follow?
Yes.
I mean, again, the rate we were going to consider was 39.5 at the budget meeting in June.
Right.
And now it's 42, but you just said it'd be 1.3 to cover the county's portion, which would be 40.8, not, instead of 42.
So we had some changes. One of them was the valuations actually came in lower than we considered at the budget workshop. So we had some loss there. And let me see what else we have.
Did you include the cost of the connection with Stephenville in that 1.3 cents that we were going to have to pay for internet connection, like 1,500 a month?
Right.
There were other costs that were associated that we would have to incur other than what the county was not paying to be able to keep this network on a regional basis.
Yeah, I believe that is included in the $300,000 difference. Yes.
Chris, on the budget, what was the tax rate that was proposed to meet that budget? Was it 39? What was it, 39?
39.5 is what we talked about at the budget workshop.
And on the worksheet that HCAT came back was the no new revenue would be 39.
.4.
Right. I mean, to me, I think doing a budget close to what we need, which is .395, with anticipation that the county is going to provide safety and police response with their, with that contract signed. If you, if the worst-case scenario is you have $300,000 that is not funded, we always are over budget when, at the end of the year. And we use it for projects. And we allocate that excess money to projects. And that is what we can allocate some of that money to if, if they don't fund it. If that's not feasible, I mean, we are 15% over what the city council has voted to keep in excess funds. So we're at 40%. The required excess funds amount is at 25%. So we overbudget by 15% of our annual budget. So if, if that's the case, I mean, we have money that we don't have to increase the tax rate to 42. We can keep it at .395.
I do need to add something to that. So the budget workshop considered a tax rate of 3999, not 395.
3999.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for calling that out.
Yes.
I forgot that.
So the, the county has not signed anything. I mean, this is an ongoing saga. And I was remote, but dialed into the meeting that was held, was it last Friday?
Friday.
Last Thursday. And I am not surprised that we don't have an approved agreement today because we were not close. We were way off. In fact, they were talking about partnership versus helping pay for this activity. So I also wanted to read what the voter approval tax rate comprises. It's a no new revenue, maintenance, and operations rate. It's just the maintenance and operations, not our utility rates, times 1.025. And that was scratched from 1.035 down to 1.015 for the last three weeks. We've been on the phone and calling and going and visiting for the last three weeks to make sure that our legislators understood what they were doing to the cities with a 1.15 rate, much less a 1.0, I think 3.5 is too low. Anyway, it's operations rate times 1.025 plus the current debt rate plus the unused increment rate minus the sales tax gain rate. So if we have a banner year in sales tax, any sales tax gains get taken away. You know, Chris mentioned there's a chance, there's a possibility that this is the last increase we, that we have because they're going to continue doing this. And then you wake up this morning and find out, and to your, to the, to how would you spend the money, Eddie? You find out that one of our major infrastructures, taxpaying infrastructures has been, I don't want to say sold, but it has been transferred ownership into a non-for-profit or for, you know, a nonprofit organization. And all of a sudden, we're losing close to $200,000, $200,000 in, in property tax. So boom, boom. You, the 200,000, we're looking, we're going to be looking for money down the road. I'm not, I'm not liking spending the money, but I understand when your chemicals go up 30% and you want to provide water and you're going to raise rates. When your police requirements go up X percent, we're going to provide safety. We're going to provide safety to the community. I keep looking at you, Ava, like you did this to us, but don't, don't take that, don't take that way. I'm just, I'm very, I'm very leery of not approving the budget that we have since we've already had changes that are negative and hopefully we'll have changes that are positive. But we've had some big changes that are negative and hopefully, and it is hoping in one hand, that the county will agree with the, not, not just the language, they're having problems with the numbers and the language. So I'm not really willing to take that bet at this time. Go ahead, Mr. Wildling.
Mayor, what did the county actually approve then? It's my understanding that they approved to participate. What exactly did they approve?
Let me ask Michael to come to the microphone. He's the one that represented Grandbury Regional Radio Network for an extended meeting on
In the end of it all, the county did approve the interlocal agreement contingent on adding three items that basically were already being done by the city and the county. And so it was not a problem to agree to add those. They continued to talk about postponing the meeting and not voting. And I tried to stress that our city council really needed action and in order to consider what was before you tonight. And they eventually voted to approve it contingent upon adding those three items, which they had probably within an hour or two in front of them. And I had one follow-up question and I tweaked a little language on that one and, and sent it to them. And there was no more dialogue after that. They said they had everything they needed. And I just kept saying, can we get this signed and over to us? We need to get this signed and over to us. I asked for Friday, as soon as, as soon as they could get it to us, and that didn't happen. And then, of course, told them today's a holiday. So we still don't have it. We hoped to have it this morning. When we didn't, I immediately sent an email saying we're still waiting on the, the signed agreement. And I didn't get any response out of the four staff members that I sent that to.
Any one have questions for Earl? Mr. Ross? Mr. Rodriguez?
So Mayor, if I'm hearing you correct, you're proposing to have a tax increase.
I am proposing that we move to adopt the ordinance number 2554 approving the fiscal year 2025-26 annual operating budget, which requires to be a balanced budget. The expenses that are laid out in it would require a property tax increase, which would be the next motion, which would move to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2025-26 annual operating budget. We built the budget, built it-
We, we built the budget on the .3998, not the .42. We've, we've done this, we've done this network radio system without the county from the beginning. And I believe the city can continue without the county even if they don't participate. We funded it. We found the funding. We've used excess funds in the past to, to do this project. And I think we can do the same thing. If you look at your attachments, every fiscal year, we have money left over. And that was only a fraction, a 10% fraction of what we have left at the end of the year. We can, we can take that money at the end of the year and fund this project. There's no need to put the burden on the taxpayer when we have the funding. And what you're proposing is to increase their tax rate to 42 instead of giving it to what we had budgeted to the .398 or the 395.
That's $80, right?
$80 could mean a lot for a lot of people.
Yes, oh, no, for a $100,000 home.
I mean, you take $80 and you multiply it by the number of people that are paying property tax, that's a lot of money.
About 300,000, I would assume. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You'll need to sign up, pay.
Turn the microphone.
Question?
The next item, 7.5, is actually approving the, the property tax rate. So voting for 7.4 right now is just basically approving the budget. Is that correct?
We have to ratify the tax rate.
No, you have to-
7.5.
You have to approve the budget. Yeah, we have to approve the budget. We have to adopt the ordinance approving the fiscal year budget. So if we know that we're going to drop the tax rate, if we know that we're, if we think that we're going to move the fiscal year tax rate, what do you want to take out of the You have to take something.
What do you think we're putting in that's increasing this?
The, the cost to manage and run the radio system for the county.
And, and how much excess funds do we have at the end of the year, last year and the year before that?
Sure.
Hold on. So- Just, just briefly, Eddie, I understand you're talking about going into reserves if we don't have enough money. But the law requires that a balanced budget is passed, so the expenditures in this budget cannot exceed the revenue. So we can't take a lower tax rate with this budget because it's not going to cover it. It would be an illegal budget and it would make us take the same budget we had last year. So the, either something has to come out of the budget to get it down to that rate or we have to increase the rate to meet the budget. We can't rely on the reserves to pass the budget legally.
Okay, but we always have excess funds.
Sure, we have reserves.
Yeah, no, we have more than what we have. We, we, we made this budget at .398.
Right, but that 399 was before we got the valuations from the CAD. And so when they came in, they were lower. So that 399 wasn't going to meet it. So it had to be-
The CAD, the no new revenue rate is at .394. We can adopt the 394. That's based on the appraisal district.
We could, but we're not going to meet the budget. So we're going to have to decide what gets cut then if, if we're going to go with that rate.
Do you want to make that decision tonight? Is that decision made tonight?
We have to do that. Has to be done today.
So you're talking about cutting something that we don't have any purview about whether or not we're going to meet or balance the budget. You don't know that, right?
I don't, I don't understand the question.
I don't understand the question that way.
Okay, so you're saying we're not going to meet the budget. We have to do the tax increase by .42 in order to meet the budget.
Or take something out of the budget if you want to, if you-
That's what I don't understand. You're saying take out something out of the budget. All of this has been budgeted.
We'll take out, we'll take out two police.
Now you're being extreme, but we're talking about $300,000 or, I mean, .398 is what we had at the budget. Am I correct?
399.
399.
Yes, 399.
And that's with the evaluations?
Then we got the final evaluations. And as soon as we got the final evaluations, we lost a little over, almost $60,000.
Okay, so what, what cent would that be now? $60,000? How many, what fraction of a cent would that be? So we can increase it from 399 to what?
Hold on.
So $60,000, that's what we're losing?
Yeah.
That's 40 for pennies, so.
Probably like .4 cents.
.4 cents. 399, .4.
4.04.
So 40.4, 40, or .0403. Am I correct?
Yes.
So that's where I'm getting confused. It's .403 and you want to make it to .42.
That didn't come to the county's part. 40.03 did not.
So the way I understand this conversation is going is the mayor doesn't want to rely on the county to execute the interlocal agreement and move forward. Eddie does, and that's what needs to come out of the budget if we're going to adopt a lower rate. I think I've framed that properly.
The county part comes in. But according to what Jeremy just stated, we can't legally depend on them to do or not to do because we don't have a signed agreement.
That is correct. It's good point of order.
And if we, yeah, thank you, Greg.
You have to include it.
Well, and-
No, I know we have to include it. I'm saying we can't depend on them to sign it, which would allow us ultimately to reduce the rate because it's not signed yet. That's what I'm saying. It has to be included. We do not have a signed agreement with the county. They, they could go back.
They could go back in their next meeting and someone could say, I make a motion to reconsider it or Robert's Rules of Order, get a second. And they say, you know, we did say this at the last meeting, but we didn't execute the contract. We changed our mind. It's a cost that we know is, is going to occur. We have to budget for it. If they come along later and get in, great. We will have some reserves. But right now, if, if we're not going to raise the rate to cover that legal obligation, then we have to cut something else. That's the only way to make it balance.
That's a question. So if we adopt a 42-cent budget tonight, and this doesn't start until the first of the year, can we modify ours if, if that comes through?
No.
We can't lower it.
No.
Once you adopt it, you're done.
So we leave out this, what they plan on doing, what the county plans on doing? If that's what we leave out?
You can't.
You have to take something else out. No, you can't do that.
Because it's- Got to reduce it by something you're in control of. We're not in control of whether the county signs it or not.
And that's where the dilemma is right now for me, is because I can't go back and say, take this out or take this out because I can't put a priority on it. We're just making a number and we're just going to go with it and let the taxpayer pay that.
No, we could spend the time, all the time that you want figuring out what we want to take out of the budget, but this has to stay in. So, no, we have the budget book here. We have, finally, we have-
I mean, that's up to the council whether they want to go, or is it a mute point on my half that they want to increase the tax rate? I don't know. What's everybody else's opinion?
Well, they have to make a motion on that. You make motion number one, move to adopt ordinance number 25-54 approving the fiscal year 25-26 annual operating budget. Do I hear a motion? I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor say aye. Oh, wait, it's a record vote. Mr. Corrigan, aye or nay?
Aye.
Mr. Corrigan's aye. Mr. Rodriguez?
Nay.
Mr. Rodriguez is nay. Mr. Wildly?
Aye.
Mr. Wildly's aye. Mayor is aye. Mr. Overdue?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Ullam?
Aye.
Is aye. The ayes have motion number one. Motion five to one. Motion two, move to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2025-26, 25 and 26 annual operating budget. Mr. Corrigan, second it. Mr. Corrigan?
Aye.
Vote's aye. Mr. Rodriguez?
Nay.
Mr. Rodriguez, nay. Mr. Wildly?
Aye.
Mayor is aye. Mr. Overdue?
Aye.
Mr. Ullam?
Aye.
We have two pass five and one. So that's passed. Now we go to the second page. And I think I lost my cheat sheet. Or is this it? No, got it. This one is 7.5. Public hearing, consider adopting ordinance number 25-55 approving and levying a property at the local tax rate for the city of Grandbury for fiscal year 2025 and 2026. Mr. Kaufman? And then I'll open it up to public hearing.
I think we've whipped that horse to death in spite of, in lieu of saying all that. Again, I'll just say that what's on the table at this point is a 42-cent tax rate per $100 valuation.
Any comments here? No? Mr. Overdue or Mr. Kaufman?
Let me add one more fact, just to kind of give brevity, if I can get this to open up. Here we go. Last page, on the last page of your truth and taxation report in your agenda packet, the no new revenue rate is, is the amount of money that we would need to levy to collect the same amount of revenue from the property that we were able to assess last year is 39.4024 cents. The voter-approved tax rate is 52.0903. And the de minimis rate, which is a special formula that's in the existing code that I believe is going to go away in the next legislative session based on future agendas of politicians that are sharing that, is .43 cents, 43.7253. So we're adopting a rate less than the de minimis rate. And that was, the de minimis rate was originally designed to help small cities under 30,000 population buy a fire truck when you could still buy a fire truck for a half million dollars. So now they're a million and a half, and so that law is really old and it doesn't allow you to be able to buy anything. So I would also like to add that- So I would also like to add that had we had this dilemma in the next, after the next legislative session, we wouldn't have the luxury of saying a 42-cent tax rate compared to a 39-point tax rate. We would be looking at a special election because of the, the lack of efficiency provided by our county court. So let's be nice, that's the way it is, lack of efficiency. So anyway, so at a 42-cent tax rate, you're above the no new revenue rate by 1.6 cent, I believe, yeah, 41, 42, 2.6 cent, is that what it is? Yeah. 2.6 cents. And then you're well with under the voter approval rate by 10 cents and some mils. And then the de minimis rate, you're under it by 1.7 cents. So I think you struck a good middle there, if it makes sense that way. Whatever it is, I don't like it, none of us like it, it's taxes and we don't like it, but we understand we have to pay the bills, so...
Other comments? I'm gonna go ahead and open a public hearing. Anyone want to speak on this? I see no hands, no one standing. I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.4200, which is effectively a 6.59% increase in the tax rate? Do I hear a motion? Mr. Corrigan makes a motion.
Second.
Mr. Overdue makes a second. I need a record vote on this one, too. Mr. Corrigan? Mr. Rodriguez? Mr. Wildley? Mayor is aye. Mr. Overdue? And Mr. Hallam? That passes five and one. Thank you, gentlemen. We will now go to, and thank you. Ava, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ava. I know it was a lot of hard work on you and your team to put that budget document together and to work through all the department heads and the public meetings that we had. And thank you for your leadership. It was valuable, and we couldn't have done it without you.